I'm gonna start with the, uh, our muting.
Muting and the camera.
And the mic's live.
Uh, the microphones are live.
And we are going to start recording.
Right, wait, wait. Ten seconds. Five, four, three, two, hit record, please.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December second Select Board meeting. Uh, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. Uh, we do not have any minutes signed tonight. Uh, there are no additions to the agenda. Uh, we have no appointments tonight. And so we're just gonna jump right into five A. Um, this is routine business happens every year right around this time. But figured if Nicole wouldn't have any questions about it, it's a good time to ask. Nope. Can I get a, sorry?
I said I don't think so, no.
Okay, your motion?
Um, I make a motion to vote to waive the hearing for class three license.
Perfect. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, that's right. Jen's participating remotely. We have to do this, uh, uh, roll call. Jen?
Oh.
Again?
Yes. Yes.
Whitney, aye.
Ed, aye.
Lisa, aye.
Nicole, aye.
Yep, very good. Thank you. And, uh, moving on to five B. Vote to renew the liquor licenses for twenty twenty-five and endorse the certification forms.
I make a motion to vote to renew the liquor licenses for twenty twenty-five and endorse the certification form.
Second.
I would like to offer a friendly amendment, uh, to the liquor licenses that have been applied for.
I vote to renew, I make a motion to renew the liquor license for twenty twenty-five that had been applied for and endorse the certification form.
Alright, so this is a vote just on the amendment piece. Uh, Jen?
Yes.
Whitney?
Aye.
Yes.
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 That's five yeses to the amendment.
Just, um, a point of information, we still have two that will probably be coming in before the next meeting.
Okay.
Mill Valley, Mill Valley Golf Lines, um, still needs a fire sign up for their alarm system. And, um, checkers did not have a, um, certificate that would stand it from our, um, collector. So hopefully we'll have those in two weeks. They were not in your packet, so you didn't.
Right. So we're waiting for them to come. Alright, great. So let's take a vote on the, the main, the main motion here. Jen?
Yes.
Whitney?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yes. Five O. Thank you. And then, let's see here. The begin endorsing the twenty twenty-five licenses. These are all the packets that we've, um, excuse me, these are all the alcohol beverage licenses, the common victor's licenses, the entertainment licenses. Where's that one go?
Oh, I'm still, there they are.
And, uh, the agent's seller's license. There's one more packet. So at the beginning of the endorsement season, the, um, we're all signing here that we endorse. Is there any, any questions as to what we're signing tonight?
No.
No.
Alright. And then, just need a motion for the chair to sign these licenses.
Each one separately or just?
I don't, just all together.
I make a motion to endorse Ed Boucher to sign the, uh, Town of Belchuson license for public entertainment of Sunday. Entertainment line and license. Okay.
Very good. Sir, second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Whoops. Uh, Jen?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Five O, five O. Very good. Thank you. And then we've got, um, we have a vote to amend the committee makeup of the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Um, Steve, you wanna talk a little bit about this? Like what's going on?
So the Energy and Sustainability Committee, uh, was formed a few years back. And the, uh, the original charge was not well defined in the membership. It was five to nine, which is, you know, quite a range. After several successful years of being a committee and doing some, some good projects, um, they're, they're still motivated to keep going and, and take on some new, um, projects and goals and objectives for the next couple of years. And they want to, um, really zero in on nine members. Um, so they're asking that we simply just revise their, their charge to set that, that number. So that's really it.
Open for discussion.
Are, are they having trouble getting quorum?
No, they have a lot of interest. That's one of the reasons they wanna set it at nine and keep it there.
It's pretty high, nine.
Yeah, no.
But if that's what they're comfortable with.
I was at their last meeting and they had four new members there, or interested members. So they do have a lot of interest right now.
I've never been a big fan of committees more than five for quorum reasons. It's hard. Right now, these folks are interested in, in it, but what happens when they're not? And then they're gonna miss quorum and stuff like that. And they'll be right back here to lower the committee threshold.
Not only that, we have five other committees that have not met, that are, they have open seats, so.
Well, so just to be clear, the, do they, do they want us to amend the language of no fewer than five and no more than nine to something more specific?
They want it to be nine.
They want it to be nine people.
Nine. So their quorum would be five? Is that right?
So if the, if the current language says five to nine, to me, it sounds like it's covered.
Right. True.
Unless I'm missing something.
Well, what's their logic? Well, they have se- they have seven right now, so if they have four interested members, that still puts them over.
What is their logic for wanting nine?
I, I don't know. I, other than they just wanna make sure that they, going into the future, they always have nine members because as committee changes, the, the committee may feel five's appropriate and exclude people. They, they feel that there's enough interest that it should always have nine. And they wanna set that into, into perpetuity for the future. Um, so if we leave it at five to nine, it's up to the discretion of the, of the committee to make up that, that choice. So they're just basically looking to solidify it at nine, period, and not have any less.
Yeah.
Do they put forward any names for new committee members tonight?
Not for the board's consideration. We have names in the office. Um, I make those appointments, so they wouldn't come through here.
Yeah, just to, to Chair Boucher's point, I don't know if this changes anything or if it's necessary if it already says five to nine.
What do we wanna do?
I'm okay if they want nine.
They can have nine right now.
I'm saying if they wanna set it at nine, we don't know what their reasoning is, but do we know better than they?
I mean realistically, they can, and a future board, if a future board wants to titrate it back down, they can do that also, just coming back in front of the board, so.
Yeah.
Right. Well, they have a lot of interest and this is what they want.
If, you know, if I could, when I see committees struggling, I, I worry about them. And when I see a committee flourishing, um, I look for ways to support them. And if they're, they're doing very well, um, I think this is a simple ask.
Yeah.
And, you know, I wanna be supportive and, and, um, thankful that, that they can get members and that they're doing good things for the town. So I, I think it's really no harm because they could just come back, as Jen stated, and, and ask to go to seven if they're having trouble in the future.
I agree.
Okay.
I make a motion to amend the committee makeup of the Energy and Sustainability Committee to include, uh, no less than nine members on the committee. Okay.
Fix it at nine, so no less.
Okay.
Get them going to eleven.
I make a motion to amend the committee makeup to nine members for the Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Second.
Um, made in second. Any further discussion? Uh, okay. Uh, Jen?
Yes.
Whitney, yes?
Nicole, yes?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Five E. Vote to rescind approved minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty-four. Are those minutes in here?
Yes.
Yep.
So we had a, um, what I would consider just script errors, uh, which is in your minutes. Um, we're essentially removing one word from a, a statement. So according to the town clerk, it's a little bit of a process. We need to, uh, vote to rescind the minutes. And then we'll have another vote to approve, um, the new minutes. And then vote the amended minutes. There's three separate votes that need to take place, um, in order to make this happen, so.
Okay, alright, so.
Alright for the bureaucracy.
Yeah, yeah, no, no worries. Um, alright, so can I get a motion for five E?
I move that we rescind the meeting minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty-four that were approved on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
We gotta do them all individually, right?
Yes, sorry.
Just the first one.
Yep, that was it.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion made in second. And Jen?
Yes.
Whitney?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Ed Epstein's. Uh, five F.
I move that we amend the meeting minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty-four by striking the line. She does n-
No.
No. Five F.
She might be right. These might, are these in the right order?
Yeah. I move that we amend the meeting minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty-four by striking the line. She does not feel that legislation can mitigate bad behavior.
It's not striking the line, it's just bad.
Uh, the line was struck in the minutes.
The revised one will be in the, in the new, the new minutes.
Okay, so is it striking the line or striking the word?
We'll get to that.
So we have to approve the minutes and then approve the amended minutes. We can't just approve the minute minutes.
Yeah, that's the third one. The, the whole line was struck.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the new minutes, it's, it's gonna reflect, um, legislate behavior instead of bad behavior.
Right, right.
Right. If I can find it.
Page eleven, if that helps, I think. Is it that? Page ten.
It's actually on page ten.
Yep. Second paragraph, top of page ten.
And I guess the rest of the minutes are the in your to be signed file. Let's just verify that the right statement will be in there.
Here are the new minutes.
It'd be on page two, the top.
Yeah, the whole line is struck. So that's not right either, then.
Okay, so we'll have to make the change then tonight. So just, so you want just that struck?
That's what we talked about, yeah.
Correct.
It's a good thing we're having a big conversation about this.
The new minutes should have the, the statement in there except for the word bad.
Now this has the whole line struck.
Those are the new minutes?
It's in this thing to be signed.
Okay, that's, that should have been just that one word.
Well, we can still vote on ENF and then table G for next meeting, right?
Um, you can, you can approve G tonight with the changes we just discussed, making sure that that sentence is in there without bad or yes. So you could do two things. You can, since nobody seconded that motion, you can change it so that just the word bad is struck.
Okay.
And then in the new minutes, we just need to state that the sentence will read, you cannot legislate behavior.
Right.
So I'll, let me revise that.
So you're gonna do a little ad libbing here.
Okay.
So just because I, so withdraw your former motion. Just make a brand new one.
Okay. I withdraw my former motion. I move that we amend the meeting min- minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty-four by striking the word bad.
Yep.
Perfect.
Second.
Made in seconded. Uh, Jen?
Yes.
Whitney?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Uh, Epstein. Four oh one.
We have one more.
Now you can approve the new minutes with the changes that that sentence will be in there except for the word bad, so we can make that change afterwards.
Do you want me to read the motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the agenda, the amended meeting minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty-four to read. She does not feel legislation can mitigate behavior.
Mitigate behavior? No.
Well, that's what it said.
No.
No, it should just be legislate behavior.
Can, she does not, oh my gosh. Alright, let me, let me do it again. I move that we approve the amended meeting minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty-four to read. She does not feel legislation.
This is wrong. It's just you can't legislate behavior.
That's what it should say.
That's what it should say. It's not what it says. Can we, yeah, make a motion to just stop this? This is not what was said.
Right, you said legislate behavior.
Behavior, period.
That's what was struck, so.
So it can't.
Correct. So that's it. This is.
See this? That's not.
This is not the corrected set. This is the set that we were supposed to eliminate, unfortunately. This was in the to be signed folder?
No, that's my meeting packet.
Okay.
Can we take this up at the next meeting?
We can if you want.
I mean, at this point, it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Actually, if you know what you wanted to say.
But if you don't want to correct, then just make the.
Yes.
Why don't you make a motion? I don't wanna talk about this.
I make a motion that the minutes of the November fourth meeting reflect the, the following statement. Now I forget what I said. God.
Cannot legislate behavior.
Yes. I believe you cannot legislate behavior.
That's, that's the one.
That's it.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Uh, Jen, how do you feel about that?
I'm sorry.
Yes. Maybe so.
Engage, yes.
Yes.
Yes, Lisa.
Yes.
And Ed Epstein's. Okay. Very good. Let's see here. Uh, now on to five H. The ARPA, ARPA obligations, the status and reallocation. So everyone has, uh, the current list of projects and the budget and kinda like what's left over. And Steve, I think you wanna spend a few minutes on this, yes?
I'm hoping to get it done in a few minutes. Alright, um, so everybody has a, a current list of ARPA projects from start to finish, four and a half million dollars worth. This was a work in progress all day today. We were still making phone calls and just verifying things. So I don't have the recommendations in print. So what I'm gonna do is go over to available budget column and let you know where everything is, the status. And then what we can do is, um, put together a motion to reallocate and move some funds around. In total, it's very little money. So we, we'll, let's start with eighty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars for grants coordinator. Um, we conducted a second interview today. Um, we think we're zeroing in on an individual to take that seat. Um, the communications manager has been hired and will be starting on the sixteenth.
Can we go back to the grants coordinator? Was that at the salary, um,
Yes.
that was indicated and the, the same hours?
Correct, yep.
Really?
Yep.
We got someone?
I think so.
Is there a, is salary a concern?
Um, we asked her that question today and she was okay with it.
Okay.
That's great.
Yes. Um, where was it? Communications manager will be starting, that's the forty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, she's starting on the sixteenth. The VCTV general manager, um, HR department is checking references on an individual today. The responses have been favorable, so I'm expecting that, um, we'll be making a call, um, tomorrow. And that's a department head position, so the select board will need to ratify that appointment. Um, so likely we'll do that in our special meeting on Thursday, just to make sure it's in place and ahead of, and with enough time to secure the ARPA funds.
Okay.
So it looks like we're gonna be three for three.
And these three amounts include the additional funds that we appropriated? Okay.
Yes, the last meeting, okay. Um, the Lake's treatment project, the paperwork is in the accounting office. Um, there's a contract and a purchase order request. So that money, um, will be obligated, um, by the end of this week. So that's all set.
That's great.
Two cents for the, uh, website design. Um, I think the website is wonderful. If they charges two more cents, I would've been happy to pay it. Uh, but we'll be reallocating that money, um, in a minute here. Um, the ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-one cents, um, that is the creative economy consultant that we have working for is Maude. Uh, my conversations with her is that, um, we are well on our way to having everything obligated. Um, she's aware of the deadlines. Both the town accountant and I have spoken to her several times and we're in agreement that she's gonna have this buttoned up, so.
What is she looking to spend it on?
Um, she has a contract out for, well, an RFP out she, I don't have the entire list. But it's everything that was in her original proposal. Maybe Jen knows a little bit more. Um, I know we're.
I know some, yeah, I know some of it. So there's fifteen thousand for that, um, cultural district.
Coordinator.
Person. Um, does this include the granny manager we just?
Yes.
That's in the ninety-seven or it's outside of that?
Uh, that's in that. And then we have the pocket park.
Pocket park, which, uh, she's working with Linda on to get all that stuff buttoned up. Um, I think, oh, and there's a contract with the Emmett Chamber. That's a small amount of money. Um, and.
To do what?
The library.
Yep.
Uh, we're doing an event this spring with the chamber. Um, we're gonna subsidize memberships for, uh, Elchertown businesses and they're gonna put on an event. And that contract is being finalized.
That's great.
Yeah.
Um, what, the, the first one, the coordinator position? I, I'm not fam- I'm not familiar with that.
The cultural district?
Yeah, what, what is it?
Small little, it's, it's to take on and continue on after she's, her contract is, ends in the end of June. So this person is just gonna overlap with the work that she's doing to put in the application because the application will lead you after she's gone.
Okay.
Um, and the hope is that we'll receive the cultural designation and that that will come with monies that will be able to continue to fund the position
Okay.
for something similar, you know, to that gist of it, so.
Thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, we were holding twelve thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents as a contingency unreserved. Um, we're gonna have to reappropriate that. We have a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty cents left over in our technology budget. Um, this was for the IT department. Um, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents for the elevator repairs. Um, we sent the, uh, we, we opened up bids last week. Um, they were favorable, so, um, we sent the contract to the low bidder and we're waiting for that to be returned, so we should have it in time. The parking lot reconstruction, five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents. We're gonna use some of that for an additional, um, light post. Um, I'm sure by now everybody's seen the lights in the parking lot. And we're also gonna move some of that to another project. Um, and that was it for balances remaining. So that leaves very little money. Um, the elevator contract, I'm gonna start there. Uh, we have an electrical, um, estimate of fifteen thousand dollars that we need to, um, secure to do some electrical work for the, the elevator project. And the bid came in at a hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. So we don't have enough there currently. We're gonna need to move twelve thousand, eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents to that line. We can take that out of the contingency. Which leaves us, um, almost nothing. So what I wanna do, at the last meeting, I moved some money out of the highway garage ventilation. They, the DPW has asked, um, that we move some money back into it. Um, they need an additional hose reel in order to make the system work more efficiently and function better. That's two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. And what I wanna do is take, um, the two cents, and I'll go over this again, um, from the technology. I wanna take five hundred and two dollars and sixty-six cents from the contingency. Hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty cents from the ventilation system, uh, excuse me, from the.
Technology.
Technology, move that to the ventilation system. And two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents from the parking lot for the ventilation system. So there's two components to this. If, if you're in agreement with what I'm trying to do, get the elevator done. Um, we're a little over twelve thousand dollars short from our original estimates, but at least it's, it's finally workable. The first bid was rejected. The second bid came in, um, a hundred thousand dollars over. And now this third bid has finally come in and will be then twelve thousand. So I think we're as good as it's gonna get and we don't have time.
That's great.
So that's my priority because we have a lot of money set aside for the elevator and it needs to be done. Um, my second priority is to finish the ventilation system that we started, get it properly working. And since it's only, uh, twenty-seven hundred dollars, you know, that's all, that's all we really have left that we're working with. That's, that's the good news. Um, everybody's efforts came, they came together very well. And we still have one more meeting. If something goes wrong with any one of these projects, we still have the sixteenth. Um, if we have to, we can have a special meeting. We'll make this work. But anyhow, um, so the two parts of this would be to, um, maybe it'd be easier if we just, if, after I recite this, somebody says so moved. Anyhow, any questions?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
On a scale of one to ten, how confident are you that you're gonna have that hundred and fif- the, the elevator, the full amount obligated?
We sent them the contract and there's four weeks left, so I'm assuming we'll have it back in time. I am confident.
Are you at a ten?
Yeah.
Okay, if something crazy happens and we don't have it, what's, what's the alternative?
The only way to spend money this quickly would be something off of a state contract. Um, it has to be an existing contract and we don't have time to bid a project. So we would have to pick up a, a catalog and look at our capital plan and pick vehicles, um, you know, 'cause there's state contracts for vehicles and we could, we could cut and order within days. Or equipment, like a, you know, a backhoe or something like that, as long as.
But you feel confident that you could quickly spend a hundred and fifty?
If I had to, yeah. Go ahead, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, and we'll know if, if there's some sort of a problem with that contract, we'll know before the next meeting.
But you've sent it back. They just need to sign it and then we're done. They want the money.
I'm confident that we're gonna get it through.
May I ask a question about that elevator contract also? It's not the same company that the library has used for.
No.
Okay, I know they're having some trouble.
No, this is with their elevator. Yep, yep.
Um, the second. Um, the second comment that I wanted to make is this ninety-seven thousand sitting with Creative Economy. The way you worded it was that it, I didn't feel a lot of confidence that those funds were gonna get obligated by the end. We've got a list of so many capital items that need that money. I personally would rather see that money go right to capital items that need repair, including a twenty-two thousand dollar fire truck engine.
I'm confident she's gonna have it wrapped up.
Okay, the way that you worded it was she felt like she could get it done?
That's what she told me and I agree with her, that she'll get it done.
Okay.
And if there's any glitches, we'll deal with it in two weeks. I don't wanna pull the carpet out from underneath there at the moment.
Okay, we good?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I would like to do is take twelve thousand, eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents from the contingency and move that to the elevator project. I would like to take two cents from the web design project. Five hundred and two dollars and sixty-six cents from the contingency. One hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty cents from the technology project. And two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents from the town hall parking lot reconstruction. And move that to the highway garage ventilation project.
So moved? Why not?
Because the motion's coming made by board members, so.
What?
Motion's gonna be made by board members.
Oh, oh, okay. I can't do that list.
Did you write it out?
I did.
You make it.
I move, um, as it relates to the ARPA funding that we have, I move, uh, that we move twelve thousand, eighty-five dollars, twenty-five cents from the contingency. Line item to the elevator, two cents from the web design, uh, to the elevator.
The highway garage ventilation.
Oh, that's, so the look next, we're all highway garage?
Yep.
All right, two cents for the web design of the highway garage ventilation project, five hundred and two dollars and sixty cents from contingency to the highway garage ventilation project, hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty cents from the technology to the highway garage ventilation project. And two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents from the parking lot project to the highway garage ventilation project.
My second.
Any further discussion? Jen? Roll call vote?
I'm gonna assume all that math works out, so yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
Lisa?
Yes.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, I didn't make room for further discussion. Did you wanna add any other comments?
No, I made my comment on how I feel about that ninety-seven thousand.
Okay, um, I vote yes.
May I actually, sorry, I know we already voted, may I actually make one comment? I do feel like we're, there's still some money left here, right? There's still about three thousand dollars?
Two thousand dollars.
The town hall parking lot?
Yeah, there's about three thousand left here.
Yeah, that's gonna go to another light pole.
Okay, so that's gonna be a separate motion?
Right.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
That's already in the project, so that's just gonna stay there. Yep, yes, I left them with that.
So that passes, uh, four to one, Steve. Okay. Uh, no miscellaneous matters, uh, town managers report. Mr. Williams.
All righty.
Sounds like you just talked about all this.
I did talk about a lot of it, so, um, as usual, I endorse Lawrence. We have completed the changes to the, um, social media policy. Um, it's been about a year and a half since that was implemented and, uh, you know, we worked through some, some bugs with it. It's been in council, it's been through communications committee, um, it'll be back in front of this board on the sixteenth for the blessing and then we'll, uh, we'll move on. It took a couple of days of vacation, had a few days off for the holiday. We had an MWRA Quavon watershed feasibility study, um, presentation that was, uh, put on by the MWRA. And it spoke about expanding the, um, access to the Quavon into, um, surrounding communities. We're talking hundreds of millions of dollars, um, several different scenarios. And not something that, um, I foresee in our future. Because they did not feel that MWRA would be responsible for any of the construction costs, so, um, it doesn't look like that's gonna be a viable thing. So if anybody wants to see the PDF of the presentation, I'd be happy to forward it, but, um, no, I'll do that anyway, it's fun to. It'd be fun to see.
Will you repeat again what MWRA stands for?
Mass Water Rural Association, they, they are the ones that manage the Quavon. Yep.
And they expected that we would pay for it?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, we were a little surprised, uh, the attendees, um, a few people spoke up and said, you know, you've been taking water out of our, our, our communities, our watershed. You know, the drainage areas that go into the Quavon or that, that's in Belcher Town for ninety-plus years. Not only do you expect us to pay for the pipes and the infrastructure, but then you're gonna sell us the water back. And I agree with that, it just seems crazy to me, um, but that seems to be the way it goes. So I don't know if that'll change in the future, you know, a cross connection would be nice to have because we oftentimes run into drought situations and we have problems with irrigating law fields and, and those things, but, um, for the, the hundreds of millions of dollars that we're talking, um, you know, it just doesn't seem practical. So maybe there'll be some change. And the other piece of legislation that, um, Darren Saunders has been working on is, um, some sort of payment to the communities that have, um, given up their water for, for, you know, the eastern part of the state. That's, you know, pans, uh, you know, we're not talking about a lot of net money annually, um, and there hasn't been a lot of movement on it, so it's something I need to follow up with him on.
Yeah, money in.
Any money is.
Money in, it's good.
Right. All right, um, let's see, where was I? Um, I've been meeting regularly with the HR director on employee matters and of course, filling these positions. We had our first capital improvement planning committee, meeting. We do have five members, um, we only had four show up, um, one had a personal, um, issue that, that he needed to attend to. Uh, but it was a very good meeting, uh, they asked very good questions, I gave them a lot of information on our capital inventories and capital request forms, um, capital policy, um, guidance from the DLS. And, uh, they're all going over that now. We have a meeting schedule set up, we have six meetings in the next three months.
That's great.
Um, two in December, two in January, two in February. According to the policy, um, this committee's supposed to have their report finalized by January first. Being that we didn't meet till November because this is a new committee, um, I agreed to, uh, let them work through till the end of February. That'll still fit within our budget timeframe. And they are fully aware that next year, they, you know, hopefully will have things wrapped up by January one. Um, so that doesn't seem to be a problem. The second thing that they asked about that, um, the selectmen should be aware of, um, select board, is the, uh, the threshold for a capital item, we set that at twenty thousand dollars. Our capital inventory and request forms have been anything over ten thousand. So they asked if they could at least review those and rank them as part of their, their process, and I said I didn't think that was an issue. And I'd be happy for them to do that because we have those in front of us and we really don't know what to do with them. I think at some point we may wanna revise the policy to formally recognize requests over ten thousand dollars. At least until we get our budgets, um, better aligned with what's available for money every year, the structural deficit. Because a lot of those smaller items wouldn't ordinarily be included in budgets. And that's why they're not considered capital items, um, but because we don't have any, any ability to budget for, you know, like five thousand dollars to replace a carpet or something to that effect, you know, we need to be able to rank them for now. So I told them to go ahead and do it just to, um, for time, um, so that they can at least look at them and we'll see what comes in next year for capital request and, again, we may wanna come back and, and revise the policy or we may find that we can live with the ten thousand, one thousand thresholds.
So they provide a final report, January, February, and then they dissolve?
No, they'll remain active, they'll probably meet once a month in lieu of a progress. You know, as projects are developed, um, they'll probably continue looking at the backlog or stuff, um, re-ranking things in, in lieu of waiting for the.
So is it, is it really a final report?
It's not a final report, it's a final recommendation. So it'd be a recommendation for the ranking of, of the projects.
Okay.
So I misspoke, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a final report, um, in the sense that they would dissolve afterwards.
Well, we have the opportunity to meet with them and go over what their plan or their thoughts are for ranking things?
Um, they had asked about coming in and talking to the board, um, I guess, the reason we set this up is so that they would have autonomy from o- other influences, even the finance committee for that matter, we didn't allow financial, um, people on this.
Yes.
Well, we can, I can always attend a meeting if I wanna know what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, um, you can certainly attend a pu- public meeting, the, um, the intent was to have a group of dedicated people look at things without, without the outside influences. Right?
Yep.
Um, it's, I think it's important to get a ranked list as, uh, Steve was talking about, and then, and then the politics can begin after that. Right, but I think it's important to get.
Well, I think my, the reason for me asking the question was not to bring in politics, it's just to hear what they're doing. Just to wanna know more, and I can attend a meeting.
I will let them know.
I'd like to, I'd like to revisit the twenty thousand, ten thousand. Tell me again your reason for lowering it to ten thousand? I mean, because for capital campaigns.
Right.
And for any kind of capital expenditures, those are for the big items. And maybe I'm not moved by carpets, you know?
Well, that was probably a bad example, but there's no, traditionally, we have always considered capital, anything over ten thousand. So we have a whole list of stuff that's ten thousand and over. And to cut all of that out now and tell department heads that there's no means to fund these because they're not considered capital and we can't put them in your budget. That's not fair. And it doesn't solve the problem of fixing our buildings. It could be a door.
Okay.
It could be a carpet, you know, it could be anything. Somehow we have to be able to pay for these things. I mean, you might not be moved by carpets, but at some point carpets become trip hazards. And they have to be replaced. So until everybody gets up to speed with this twenty thousand dollar threshold.
Okay.
It makes sense to at least rank those for now. The bottom line is, we only have a set amount of money. We haven't determined yet if we're gonna borrow this year for capital. And in the end, we may be looking at things saying, well, that's too expensive, what's next on the list? And we can, when we get to the point where we're down to, say we have ten thousand left to spend, we may have to say, okay, what do we have that's in that price range that we can put into the, this year's purchasing? So I want it there, so it just puts all those little projects to bed. Because if we don't do it, then, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how do we move from people under, from the understanding piece you're talking about to a, a threshold of twenty thousand?
So what's undetermined yet is can, can we move to twenty thousand and not need a lower threshold? And I'll know that better once I see the rankings.
Okay. And it doesn't have to go, maybe it's fifteen.
Right. So that's why I said we may wanna consider this down the road. At this point, I just want them to rank everything that we have and then we'll look at it and say, well, there's not a lot of ten thousand dollar to twenty thousand dollar projects, so it's not necessary. Or we may say there's a lot of them, and how are we gonna deal with them? You know, one way we can deal with them is to tell department heads to, you know, put projects together. If there's a door here and a door at the senior center and they're both ten, we'll put them together as doors and put it under twenty. So we can do those kinds of things.
Okay.
But at this point.
I see what you mean, okay.
December, it's December second. We just need to be flexible and get this done this first time.
Okay.
What I don't wanna have happen is the whole concept throughout the window. I, you know, I'm okay with some minor tweaks like the deadline of January first, I mean, four weeks is not enough time.
No.
Um, I'm okay with looking at a lower threshold, but I, I, what I don't wanna do is, is change the, the real meat of the, of the intent of what we're trying to do, um, and I don't think we're doing that yet.
No, you're not, okay, thank you.
The, um, let's see, I already went over ARPA obligations, elevator bid. I did have a very good meeting with various department heads on the tax workoff program, I think we're making a lot of progress there. They're doing a lot of outreach to other communities, they're coming up with a lot of good ideas, um, different things that, um, other communities are using seniors and veterans for. So I'm, I'm thinking that it's gonna come together pretty well here, so that's the good news.
Good.
I attended a meeting with the, uh, DLS regarding our financial audit. This is a project that, um, was grant funded last year and we paused due to, um, staffing issues. So this was the second kickoff meeting, um, it went very well, um, let me see here, let me jump down, 'cause that's part of my update too. So we met for almost two hours with, um, two people from the DLS. And we talked about the town hall finances, the financial offices, um, staffing levels, um, we went through quite a bit of information. And what was apparent at the end of this is that when this report is complete, it's really gonna function similar to a strategic plan for the next three to five years. There's probably gonna be recommendations for a lot of different changes. I don't know what they all are yet, you know, again, this was just a kickoff meeting. The good news is they are very interested in speaking to the board members individually. So I will be forwarding your contact information out to them, they're gonna set up meetings or call, um, to get your feedback. So you'll have say in this as well. What else did I have in there? Through the conversation, um, we talked about their previous work here in Belcher Town in the two thousand twenty-one report and the various recommendations that were in that report. I gave them a status update on all of those. And the one, um, that they comment the most on was the, uh, formation of a government study committee. And I told them that that was in my goals and objectives for this year, and I had recently picked that up. I had been in touch with, uh, Tom Lovlo who recently conducted a charter review to find out how they went about it. And when I was done explaining where I was with things, they, uh, said I should probably put that on hold until this report is finalized because this will be the roadmap for a government study committee to, uh, make recommendations for different charter changes. So I just wanted to inform the board that so you'll know upfront why it's, why it's on hold. So we're gonna work through the DLS financial audit first, come up with our strategic plan, and then we'll look at forming our government study committee. So that made a lot of sense to me.
That's a lot, yeah, but not for right now.
It was a great meeting, so, I'm really looking forward to the board members having a conversation with them and, and, you know, the things I heard were, were very interesting, so I'm looking forward to this.
It's exciting.
Study, yes, it is. All right, um, and again, I was part of the, uh, finalist interview for the BCTV general manager position. So if there's any more questions on my report, I'll move into updates quickly.
Sounds good.
All right, um, EDIC land transfer, first of the, um, I mentioned previously that the, uh, survey work had started. Mass development and the EDIC hired a firm to go in and start surveying. There was a little bit of an eruption today on the, on the forum, people were curious of, you know, what was being built. People were curious of, you know, what was being built. Well, right now, nothing is being built, it's a survey, so that, um, planning can take place for future development. Hopefully, a, a small industrial-type, um, development. That property is managed by the EDIC, it's not the town of Belcher Town, and their purpose is economic development. That's what it was purchased from the state for. And the abutters who are concerned, they will have their say. Any project that is presided to the town will have to go through either site plan approval or subdivision approval in front of the planning board, and they'll have, um, their opportunities there. So right now, this is survey work, it's preliminary, it just sets the stage for what can be done and what discussions will take place. So that's the best explanation I can give on that, but I wanted to make sure that that was out there, because now all people are...
Does the EDIC communicate with, uh, I, I read the same comments.
Yeah.
And they have the opportunity to control the narrative, or the narrative is going to be whatever.
Exactly, yeah, I, I, I wish that they had done some outreach to the abutters, just so people would know what was going on.
Well, they still can.
And you're right, they still can. I don't know if they have the, uh, the resources to do that, but we'll have a communications manager shortly and we'll...
That's what I'm thinking.
Put them in touch with her. Yes, absolutely. Six and eight Berkshire Ave, I'm still having conversations with, uh, mass development about those buildings, so we have not moved forward with another RFP, um, stay tuned. Metagil tower removal, I was hoping we'd have enough ARPA funding for that, we do have a quota of seventy-two hundred dollars, we can move forward anytime. That's something we might just have to try to budget for, um, in the future, so, unless something changes with ARPA. Um, the master plan update, um...
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask a question about the tower removal? Is that purely aesthetic, or do we have other reasons for wanting to remove it?
No, I, I think it's a liability.
Okay.
And it's not, it's not usable, it's, it's, uh, the construction wouldn't allow for modern antennas to be put on there.
Okay.
Or communications equipment.
So if someone started to climb it and fell off of it, does that liability fall with us, or could it?
I would think so, yes.
Yeah.
Jen, do you want to do any update on the master plan tonight, or wait?
I have nothing.
All right, I don't have anything either. I left the election update on here, um, I'm gonna take it off after this meeting. The reason I left it on is because, here we go again, um, I did receive a capital request from the town clerk. She's looking for poll pads, these are for rapid counting. And it's only seventy-five hundred and twenty-five dollars. So it doesn't qualify as a capital item, and we have no other funding source for it. So I, I left it on just to bring that to your attention, to kinda support what I was saying earlier about small items. We, we, we need to find a way to address them, because we don't currently have a way, and I would like to see her have the ability to, um, count ballots faster, especially with early voting and, and absentee ballots and, um, early in-person voting, it's just a lot of, or, I mean, uh, voting through the mail, it's just a lot for, for that staff to be able to handle, and this would solve a lot of that problem. So we'll keep that in mind. I already talked about the positions, the financial organizational review, next meeting, um, oh, before I get to next meeting, one of the fire engines, um, has a motor issue, and a quote came in at twenty-two thousand dollars. It's out being serviced right now. Look, we're gonna have to probably tap into the reserve fund to pay for at least some of it. We'll take what we can out of the, uh, fire department's, um, repair budget. And at the moment, we have a loaner from Amers, um, so that's the good news. You know, it seems like anytime we have a vehicle go down, we, we seem to do pretty well with somebody loaning us something, so, um, you know, I wanna just thank Amers, then I'll be following up with a letter at some point. Uh, next meeting is this week, um, we have an executive session, and I will likely have a recommendation for the BCTV general manager, um, for the board to ratify that appointment. And the meeting after that's the sixteenth, and I don't have any updates on that yet. So that's all I have.
Is it six-thirty on Thursday?
Six.
Six.
A question on the, uh, fire engine. So we would take the funds out of there, out of reserve? We have, we have funds in reserve to pay for that?
Yeah, we have an emergency account that's managed by the finance committee, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in it.
Okay.
So it's, it's for these kinds of things.
Very good, uh, any mail items people wanna talk about this week? All right, board member reports, Nicole?
On November nineteenth, I attended the finance committee meeting. They discussed everyone's, um, takeaways from the building tours, the town and the school building tours, and I think amongst them, the general consensus was pretty similar to what our thoughts were, regarding just a lot of empty spaces in some of the buildings, other buildings where there was space taken up by old files, on both school and town side, as well as, um, sorry, I'm just reading my notes here. Yeah, okay, so that was it, so just a lot of empty spaces, files, um, being taken up, and maybe misuse of, or, or not maximizing utilization, using the other spaces that, that had empty space available. Saturday, uh, November thirtieth, I actually, um, this is kind of unrelated, but I attended the, uh, Belcher Town High School, class of nineteen ninety-four, thirty-year class reunion. So, that's it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Lisa?
I don't have my cell phone with me, but I can tell you that the week before Thanksgiving, I went to, uh, a regular boat meeting, uh, at which time I talked about, um, working with the group to develop a, um, an event specific to the recovery community for the MVP two-point-oh project. I also, that week, met with, uh, members of Sports Haven, per a tip from Steve, um, to do so, to develop a MVP two-point-oh event, specific to that community as well. And that will be happening December tenth, is that right, Steve?
Yes, in this auditorium.
Right. We haven't figured out what the event's gonna be yet, but I think it's the tenth.
Yeah, I'll have to check my calendar.
Anyway, there were other things, but sadly, I can't remember.
Whitney?
Uh, let's see, uh, November twenty-first, as I mentioned previously, attended the, the Energy Sustainability Committee meeting, and, um, they did have four new interested members in the room, so we moved tonight to expand their membership. Um, the biggest piece of information that they had to share that night was that, um, town manager Williams did submit the grant application for the charging stations, and that they were informed that they have a tremendous backlog, and for them to be patient, it would be reviewed, but it would be some time, and they weren't sure if that meant a couple of months or a year, so we'll see. Um, but they were still optimistic. And then I attended, um, this past Saturday, the seventh annual winter light night that the cultural council puts on, and it's just such a nice event, it was the third I've attended, but it's even, it's, it was bigger than last year, and I'm glad that they do that for the town.
Awesome. Jen, anything?
Uh, before Thanksgiving, there was an EDIC meeting, there was a branding meeting that we went to, went to winter light night, that's the sixth year that they've done that.
Oh, they were seventh.
I didn't see many, I didn't see anybody that I knew.
I didn't see any.
Actually, I saw posts about all over my Facebook feed, I didn't see any people, so there was so many people there, I didn't see any.
That's a good problem, it's very well done.
You knew you were sick.
I wasn't sick Saturday. Uh, yeah, and then this week, there's more branding meeting, there's a bi-weekly, so Lisa and I are working on it.
Oh, yeah, I went to the branding meeting, too.
I'll remind you of all the things.
It was all good.
Yeah, you know, that's all I got right now, thank you.
Awesome, uh, any questions from the press? That looks like a no, very good. Uh, is there a movement to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Jen, all in favor, Jen?
I am, it's seven-thirty.
It's crazy.
Whitney?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.